Good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, the City of Gaston YouTube channel, and WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the blessings, Father, you've already given us and those that are about to come, Father. We pray that you forgive us when we fail you, Father. Just keep us close to you always. Help us to know your will and follow your will in all things, Father. I pray for this council, this mayor and administration, Father, this city as a whole. I pray, Father, that we seek you in all that we do, that you grant us the wisdom and the guidance, knowledge, and discernment to do all things in accordance with your will, your time, and your way. We do give you thanks in advance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of public work committee work session and council meeting held on March the 5th and the special call meeting held on March the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 1st through the 7th and 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. If there's no objection at this time, I'd like to ask Cory Walker and members of the Gaston City Thunder 10 Under Boys Basketball Team to come forward. The team was recently won the state championship in addition to winning their district. Coach Walker, will you just tell us a little bit about your team and how successful you all have been?
Yes, ma'am. First off, I'd like to thank the City Council for allowing me to come in and be a part of this meeting this morning. I accepted this basketball program in 2014, started with an 8-under team, and it's blossomed and grew since then. I currently have three basketball programs consisting of 11U, 110U, and 18U program. I have some tremendous coaches that have helped me along the way to not only teach these guys the game of basketball, but the game of life and discipline and teaching guys how to work through adversity. It could have been more of a blessing to me probably than to these guys, but all of these young men will be Gaston City products here in the next couple of years. So that was one of my goals was to get these guys that were going to feed into our school district. So if they did a magnificent job, I think they lost two games in the last two years. I think they won like 50 to 55 games and lost two. They won the ARPA state title in 2018 and also repeated this year for the 2019 season. And I'm just very proud of them. I have a great group of parents that allow me to work with these young men and just help them grow as not only basketball players, but even things. Thank you.
How do they become a part? Are these elementary students?
They are. These guys will be sixth graders next year and my son will be a fifth grader, but I just handpicked them. We started in the upwardly, they were five and six years old, and I just handpicked some kids and just started developing. And this is what it's turned out to be, and it's just been a great journey.
Well, you know I have to ask, do they make good grades?
Yes, ma'am. I want to say all these guys are-
One I know should.
A lot of honor students in this class right here. Just like, I mean, they're great kids, come from great families. They're just very demanding on them, not only sports, but academics.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're very proud of you, young men, and we want you to continue to do good, do good in school, make good grades. Maybe you can be like LeBron James.
All right.
Thank you. Unfinished business. We'll proceed with our business. Audience, ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 911 Vincent Avenue to Craig Ford. This ordinance was presented for the first reading on March the 5th. The sealed bid was accepted for the sale of the property and the amount was $854. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Are they in a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2208 East Broad Street in District 1, Adolf Jenkins and Bobby Jenkins being the last known owners. This item right here has been tabled.
We still need to conduct the hearing.
We still conduct the hearing, okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. Based on recent improvements of this property, we're asking the council to table this for 30 days. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I entertain a motion that we table this item for 30 days.
Second.
In a discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 4 Coolidge Circle in District 6. And this is State of Alabama Right of Redemption of Dennis Jawalt, the Gaston Corporation, and First Federal Savings being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we started this case in April of 2018. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
In a discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This is, I call it the gateway to Alabama City when you come off 27th Street there, right behind Food World. If you turn right, it's the first old house you see right there, and it's next door, we have the bell put up and everything out there, and it's just a total eyesore. It's been there for years, and it's something that's going to get cleaned up finally.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2009 Forest Avenue, and this is in District 6, Nicole Jackson Clark being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2332 Norris Avenue in District 6, and this is Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, possibly right of redemption, Vicky Cahoon, Possible Life Estate Right, and M.L. Moore and Mortgage Electronic Registration System Incorporated as a nominee for Nation Star Markets LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, if it's permissible, I'd like to present this case and the one next at the same time.
Located at 2334 and the same information-
Yes, ma'am. Both these houses are on one parcel, same owner, and so we filed both cases in August of last year. There've been no improvements there, and there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate both nuisances.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Is your motion for both resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt items 12 and 13.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property at 411 Evans Street in District 3, State of Alabama Martha Anderson and Martha Anderson and Carob Denise Anderson being the last known owners. And this is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,416.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone want to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property located at 1830 Elwood Avenue in District 5. This is the State of Alabama Tony Lee, heirs of Tony Lee, Tony Lee Leath, Carob Claude Ash Jr., James, and Glenda Pearson being the last known owners. And this is for demolition also that has already been performed, and the amount is Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property located at 2200 Sampson Avenue in District 6, Bestie Jake Kimball being the last known owner. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,366.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This next item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property located at 2216 Sampson Avenue in District 6, Floyd Stephen Whiteside and wife Brenda C. Whiteside in the State of Alabama being the last known owners. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,641.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien on property located at 104 South 23rd Street in District 6, State of Alabama Certain Rights of Redemption of the Estate of Mike Dutton and Sherri Dutton being the last known owners. And this is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $2,741.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution appointing election officers and disappoint poll workers for the special election on April the 9th and the runoff election on May 21st if necessary. It also authorize the use of 16 DS 200 voting machines. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is authorizing a change order number two for bid number 3880 for Community Center Renovation Project Phase Two that's located at 2,000 West Megan Boulevard. And this is for the reconciliation of all additions and deletions to the contract, and the amount is $42,080.16, increasing the contract with Hootet Construction to $1,147,640.16. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are they in a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item authorize agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment, and this is for Parrot Head Paradise to perform at Nakalula Falls on April the 13th for the Smoke on the Falls event, and the amount is $900. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
In a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 22 through 25. Our next four items are resolutions approving agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for the 2019 Summer Concert Series performance to be held at the amphitheater after First Friday events as follows. AIA, June the 7th is $5,000. The Reckless, July the 5th, $2,200. As Is, August the 2nd, $5,000. And US, September the 6th, $3,700. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Department reports, committees, boards, citizen requests. We have Joseph Cole, minority contractors firm, police department. As usual, state your name, address.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Cole, and sometimes I reside in Gaston, but most of the time it's Atlanta, Georgia. To President, to the Dean of the Council, Mr. Reed, to all council members, to the mayor, and to all of those who are present in the chambers. Several months ago, I had a meeting with the mayor, and I challenged him on some issues, and he also challenged me on some, so I've been trying to live up to the things that he challenged me on. But before I get into that, I just wanted to inform you that one of the council members said, "You're tired of hearing about old things." So I want to bring up something today that I know very few of you are aware of. The mayor's assistant, Shane Ellison, prevented a major discrimination lawsuit against the city about a couple of months ago. He also prevented two EEOs complaints, major complaints that would have led to lawsuits. The fact when reasonable people can get together and talk over issues, things are not as bad as they always seem. So may I want to thank you for your leadership and also for Shane Ellison, because we had some pretty tight conversations at times, but everything worked out, and that's what it's all about. I came before this council before requesting that the city get a contractors list of minority contractors. I spoke to some minority contractors, and once again, today I'm singing Shane Ellison's praises, and this time I may not be, but today I am. He was very instrumental in getting the names that I submitted to him, and also some of those contractors have been contacted. So I want to again thank you, ma'am, and thank this city, because I know people get somewhat tired, irritated by me, but you have to live with what you have to live with, and you're going to have to live with me until I'm gone, on issues that affect all of the citizens. And I'm just thankful that this city is willing, as Mr. Cannon and others have said, everything is not about black and white, but it's about right and wrong. And speaking on dealing with the fire department, once again, the mayor and the superintendent agreed on a plan that the fire chief had, Chief Carroll, in instituting the fire department in with the City of Gaston, at least the education department or with the high school. And Mr. Blackwell spearheaded this, and he got it started this past year. They only had about five or six students to entertain, but this coming year, it's going to be a full class of students, and this can lead away to these individuals becoming firefighters in the City of Gaston. The mayor also approved a plan, and the superintendent did too, and Mr. Blackwell is spearheading this, to do a similar thing with the police department. The police department is different, because they have a number of rules they have to abide by. But Chief Jaggers and Mr. Blackwell and the personnel director will be meeting today, and hopefully a plan has been devised where coming the fall of next year, that this Gaston City School will have a program instituted where the policemen, with their seniors, that could lead to them becoming police officers, and I think this is good for the city. But the number one recruitment tool for the police department and the fire department is to increase the police salaries. Now, I have been doing some research, and the City of Gaston have about a $51 million budget, and the City of Anniston, Oxford, Hoover, the City of Birmingham, and also the city where I reside, Atlanta, gave their officers, especially Atlanta, of increase in salary. And Mr. Back, I want you to look into this. Don't take my word, I want you to check it out. If each police officer in the City of Gaston was given a $5,000 raise, and if the entry level rate was increased $5,000, you would have a better quality of people applying, and you have more people applying, and that amount would only come to about $500,000 out of the budget. So I don't think it's too much to increase, not necessarily increase the budget, but take $500,000 out of the budget to increase for individuals who put their lives on the line each and every day. Now, some members of this council do not want the police, don't want raises. Some have said that if you raise the police, you have to raise all the employees. Now, all the employees that work for the city is very important, but the fact of the matter, these individuals put their lives on the line, and I think that should be given some consideration. When you're paying this money for other things, do not forget the people who protect and serve. And check out the amounts. Mr. Back, I want you to check it out. I want the other council member to check it out as well. This is supposed to be a city of champions. They need to act like it. Give people the money so you can get decent folks applying for the job. I think they only had about six or eight folks applying for the police job. Couple of them get it. They got people leaving, they got people retiring, and this would really help if you just really look into the numbers. Now, you all are the stewards of this money, because you all direct where everything go. So I'm appealing to you to really look hard at this. You may not want to do the $5,000 issue, but do something, and do it on the entry level rate as well, because if people see them, they're making $12, $13 an hour, they don't want to put their life on the line and not get the support that they're supposed to have. Now, the chief didn't ask me to do this. I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm my own dog in all my fights, so nobody put me up to do things. I'm doing this because it's right. And I want to give you a little history. You want to know why am I up here appealing for the police department? Some years ago, when I served as president of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, I had a white police officer to come to me to ask me to represent him before the Civil Service Board. I was somewhat weary about that, because at the time, a plot had been devised, was uncovered by some police officers that tried to assassinate me. I didn't know if he was part of the plan or not, but I represented him. At that time, there was only three members on the Civil Service Board, and the board attorney was Jack Floyd. So if you're doubting what I'm saying, then check it out. As I say, it's not always about black and white, but it's about right and wrong. And at that time, white wasn't right. So I'm just coming here today for you to do the right things. Just consider these individuals, consider what you have. We have a good city here, you got good plans. I saw the president of the council sliding down a sliding board as if she was a teenager or something, so I know progress is being made in this city, when you can get Dr. Toad doing things she used to do years ago, and it's just good for this city. So I'm here as an advocate, you know, just for things to be right, and you don't have to, I know people don't like to take my ideas, because blase, blase, but no matter who idea it is, if it's a good idea, it's going to benefit the city. I think it's something that you need to look into. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak, and all that you have to do.
You've been over your five minutes, but we didn't stop you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Hey, Joe, if you could, could you stay at the podium just for a minute? I need to tell you something there.
I got jumped on, and the city attorney said he wants to go and eat. Yes, sir.
This won't take long. I just want to know if you remember where you was 50 years ago in January, about the middle of January, 50 years ago.
No, I couldn't say exactly.
You want me to tell you where you was? You was at Drake Elementary School gym. You and Arthur Suddles was refereeing basketball with a bunch of group of kids from Alabama City at Dwight School. We all came over there, and for my part, I'm going to say this, and there's no reflection on me and you either one, but I couldn't play basketball, and you was just learning to referee.
That's true.
I just want to get that point clear, but I'm trying to get it all this across, so it had nothing to do with- that it had nothing to do with the police and fire. But I've had a bunch of friends die here in the last couple of weeks. And I just want to tell you that I really appreciate the way you, you took care of us in those days in 69 over at Drake Gym.
That's right.
I really appreciate everything you've helped us with, you know, over there when we was kids. And you know, all of us still look up to y'all.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you.
Now, I wasn't that old at that time, I was about six or seven. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
I want to say something, Madam President, on, on the lines of what he said. Now, like he said, maybe some of us don't like what he said about giving the police and fire a raise, but we really need to look at that. And we also need to look at them coming in here, working 25 years now and not having insurance when they retire. Because these young people are not going to do that. We are having a problem and we are shorthanded with the police and fire department. And I've said this before, I did not think I would ever see today where we had a turnover in the fire department. Because normally the fire department, when they come to work for the fire department, they stay for their whole time to retire. We're about what, 11 short on the police? 12 short on the fire department? And we could keep saying it ain't about the money, we just got our heads in the sand. And we're gonna have to take a look at it. Whether it's coming from him, whether it's coming from me or anybody else, we need to take a look at it. Because people are not going to put their life on the line for the kind of money we are paying. And we can't compete with Oxford, but we ought to be able to compete with Anniston. If Anniston paying more, we should be able to pay more. That's why I'm gonna just leave it at that. And I worked as a police for 26 years. A plumber, you don't know.
Start with you, Councilman Reed.
Don't have any, thank you.
I don't have a thing.
I'm skipping you.
I don't have a thing.
Miracle will never save you.
All right. I just want to say, we, the council went to Montgomery yesterday for the League of Municipalities Advocacy Day. Got to hear some speakers talk on some relative topics and we met with our legislative delegation. It was a long day, but it was a good day. And you know, when you go to those things, me being a new council member, I'm, I'm always learning and always have my eyes and ears open. So it was, I just want to appreciate the city for the opportunity to go and learn and, and to represent the city of Gaston and got to talk with other cities and other councilmen and mayors. And it's always good to get to do that, to kind of create a relationship with those folks. And a lot of good people doing a lot of good things and across our state. So weather was good, traffic was tight in Birmingham, so I made the comment, I was driving and I said, boy, I'm glad I live in Gaston. You know, I don't want to live anywhere else. This is, this is a great city. In spite sometimes of our, our struggles, you know, every, every place has, has struggles. So we just need to keep our shoulders and heads down and keep moving forward and appreciate what everybody does. Mr. Cole, thank you for your comments and I'll, I'll be more than glad to, to look at, at the request that you asked me to look at. So thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. That's all I have.
Counsel.
I would like to also talk about the league yesterday. When I went down there, I was sort of against the gas tax. But after listening to them and explaining the gas tax, we really needed. But I was one of these persons that was saying, well, maybe we need to do the lottery first. Give the people a chance to vote on the lottery. Then if you still needed more money, then go for the gas tax. But like they said, when they debate the lottery, most of that money is probably going to go to education, so it wouldn't went to the highway fund anyway. And we really need to fix our roads and bridges, so. And we also advocated on some more things down there that affect the city. And I want to commend the delegation because they, you know, they knew, but they're doing, most of them knew, all but one, but they're doing what they can to help, help their citizens and constituents, so. And then going back to the police and fire, just keep your heads up. You know, I know it's tough to the police and fire department, our public safety people, but we need you, we appreciate you, and I'm gonna continue to fight for you. Because see, I've walked in those shoes. Some of you haven't, but the ones that do, every time they go out there, they put their life on the line. And all the police is not bad. All black people are not good. So we all gonna have to work together. And I say this all the time, we in the same old boat, row in the same way. So we gonna have to figure out how to come together and work together. Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, to piggyback on the comments about the, the two league events, as most of you know, this is the time of year where in February, we go to DC. And in March, we typically are doing the same type of advocacy in, in Montgomery. So I'll start with Montgomery because that's what most people are seeing in the paper nowadays. The, the gas tax, as we know, passed in special session. So the special session will conclude here soon and, and now, and then the, and then the legislators will go into their regular session. The gas tax will be a good thing, will generate some new money for the city, right, right at about a quarter of a million. Yeah, about, right at a quarter, right at a quarter of a million dollars worth of new money. It'll also create some new pools of money for the city to tap into for, for road projects. So we're excited. We also want to commend the, the delegation for voting in unison in support of the, of the legislation because that sends a, a message to the governor's office. And so that helps us going forward politically because it gives us some, puts us in a position to be able to secure other favorable considerations. So, so again, we appreciate that from, from their perspective. We're also, we were also down there lobbying for, as you, as many of you may know, we, we currently have a voluntary online internet sales tax collection. So retailers get to voluntarily remit those taxes. What is being lobbied for now is a mandatory collection, which would generate an additional 1% on top of the 8% for us. So, so, so for, so for any of you that engage your legislative representatives, please make sure they're aware that that helps us, helps cities, helps us with many of the projects that we're trying to push for you. From the, from a national standpoint, as you know, we, while we're in DC, we visit with our, our congressional representatives. You know, again, I've said this before and I'll say it again, that, that is a very difficult proposition. Most of what we can get from congressional representatives is on a, is in a competitive scenario. And, and, and to be quite honest, cities the size of ours, midsize cities get left out in most of the models. Most of the money goes to big cities or rural municipalities. And so the, the model really doesn't fit us. And you know, as I was explaining to some of the, the new council members, we have to have a project that pops in some kind of way. You know, and I'll use Anniston as an example. Anniston had a base closing not too long ago and they were able to secure some home funds to help convert properties there. And so, you know, so we won't, we won't stop petitioning, lobbying, asking, begging, whatever you want to call it, we won't stop. But, but, but what we're up against is an uphill battle against a model that doesn't necessarily support what we've done. And we've applied, we spent money to apply for grants in the past, just not something that always works out for us. We've had most of our success as a city at the state level. And through some hard work by the departments here, we've had a good bit of success at the state level. But one thing I want you to, you know, I could go through a lot of stuff, CDBG, the opioid crisis, we talked about a bunch of stuff. But one thing I want people to understand is that our big projects, a lot of what you see being funded around the city, got funded through a bond issue. And the reason we're able to float bond issues is because we have, those bonds have a tax exempt status. Every year, through tax reform and a number of discussions, that tax exempt status gets put at risk. It gets discussed about what the federal government can put back in their coffers if they take that away from cities. One thing we did lose, many of you may not be aware of, is in 2017, we lost the ability to refinance our bonds, the advanced refunding bonds functionality. We lost that. We got in under the radar with a lot of our recent bond issues and were able to, to get those done, but we lost it in 2017. So part of what we were asking for this year is to give that back to cities. Because again, just like people in this audience who have homes, when, when the interest rates dropped and you want to refinance your home to take, to take equity out of your home, you have the ability to do that. Cities would like, also like to, with your tax dollars, and it's your tax dollars that's on the table, we'd like to have the ability to get better rates on your debt so that we can take that money and do projects in our communities. So we lost that ability in 2017. We want it, we want to get it back. So please be mindful of that as you're engaging our congressional representatives when they make their way back to the community. You know, we, we want you to be able to bring that up and talk to them about that. And the last thing I'll mention is that there is some interest around the state in developing youth councils. There is, and the league right now is polling cities to see what their level of interest is. Folks, if you look around this audience right now, there are a bunch of seasoned folks in the audience. Not very many young people, not very many young people at all. And at 48 years old, I might be the youngest person, well, Mike's probably the youngest person in the building, but he's at work right now. But at 48 years old, I'm probably the youngest person, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm one of the youngest people in this room, and that's sad. We have got to figure out a way to get our young people engaged in the process of politics. I developed my appetite from my grandfather years ago, just being forced because we only had one TV in that room, in that house. I, I was forced to sit there and watch news and learn about politics. Kids nowadays have way too many options, way too many distractions and politics is just not, it's boring and they're just not interested in it. But guess what? Tomorrow, they're gonna need their roads paved, they're gonna need their interests protected, they're gonna need prison reform and criminal justice reform and all those things that we're advocating for and fighting for now. So please, 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 you know, start identifying and encouraging young people who can be our leaders of tomorrow to get involved in the process. Not because it looks like it's fun sitting up in here, being on television, but get involved because it's the right thing to do. And when you get involved, actually know what you're talking about. Actually know what you're talking about. I get disgusted sometimes at people who get involved who don't have a clue and who aren't interested in learning. Let's encourage our young people to both get involved and actually learn the process. Be, be, be students of the process. Thank you, Madam President.
Mayor.
Yes, I, a couple of things on what Mr. Cole was saying, he's right. We do need to give a bigger raise. When I got in office, I've been here 12 years, money was tight, but we've given 11 raises in 12 years. Eleven. We also pay 80% of the insurance for our people. That's a pretty good price, too. We also, in the police, they drive their cars home, we keep them up. If they live within 15 miles of city hall, we furnish the gas, any repairs and all that. So if you add all that together, it's a lot more than you think it would be. And I'm glad we can do that. But we also, you know, had a big, uh, I'm probably get heat for saying this, but I just won't say it, but there's always something that's in the city who's taking money from us. They, in Montgomery, especially not as much Washington, but it doesn't affect us that much, but in Montgomery, they pass things called unfunded mandates. And that's where they decide to pass something along to the municipalities and the counties and they don't send money with it. And we have to cover that up. So we add all that together, it's, it's pretty good. But I'm all for having raises and like I said, I think we've been able to do with what always been going on, a lot for our people because we thank the world of them. Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize Mr. Chad Studdlin. He's been out for a while and he's been a faithful member of our city, coming and always supporting us. And so very glad to see you here with us today. Thank you for coming. I would not repeat all the comments that's been made, it's just something that I would just be saying over again, just to hear myself talk. So I just want you all to take in mind everything that was said and be mindful of it and we will act accordingly. If there anything else, we will, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.